We call this meeting a order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public input. I'll remind you, you have five minutes, I'll try to give you a one-minute warning before that time is up. First on the list is Andy Payne, Renewable Energy.
Yes, thank you, is this mic on?
The button will turn red. Perfect.
How about now? My name is Andy Payne, I live at 25 Shasta Street, just outside the city limits here. And I'm here to go on record supporting the ban on single-use plastic bags in Silver City. I think it's a worthy effort to improve our environment, and I applaud your efforts in that regard. But I'm also here to tell you, I think you need to go much further in your efforts to protect the environment. Specifically, I think I need to make a strong statement against P&amp;M's latest power replacement plan. In its current form, it allows P&amp;M to keep burning millions of tons of coal for years into the future. And some new disclosures about the numbers they use to justify the plan show those numbers to be contradictory. I can't go into many details here, but one example is, to justify a new rate increase they're asking for before the PRC, they state in their submitted data that the future electric use is going to be flat in the future, so they need to increase the rates. But then, in another case before the PRC, to justify adding the Palomaria nuclear plant into their system, they cite data that says demand will increase, therefore they need to have a bigger base load backup. It can't be both ways, but they tell the PRC whatever they need to tell them to get their plan approved. We need to make them submit a new accurate plan that truly analyzes the costs and benefits of renewable energy. They haven't done that to date. To allow P&amp;M to continue to contribute massively to global warming right in here in our own backyard, and we're condoning it by using their electricity to make this microphone work and the lights work, by paying the rates, we're condoning what they're doing. And to allow them to continue doing that, right here in our backyard, while we only debate the wisdom of banning plastic bags, seems silly and short-sighted to me. We need to get the PRC and Attorney General's office to require P&amp;M to submit an honest plan that truly moves towards eliminating coal burning as soon as possible. And I would like to see the city council take whatever steps it can to help achieve that, but please don't stay passively on the sidelines. Thank you.
Next is Alan Mann, Henry for Plastic Bags.
Good evening Mayor, good evening Council, I want to thank you for passing the ban on plastic bags. Since the ordinance went into effect, my neighborhood over north of 20th, over on Starsky Ridge on the east side, has just changed. There was always lots of trash up on the ridge because cars go up there and people walk up there. None of my neighbors or myself have seen any bags in a cactus or scrub oak or anything since the ban's been in effect. It's amazing how much cleaner our neighborhood is because the winds come out of the west and we just blow the bags in my cactus, other neighbors' trees and everything, so you don't see a plastic bag flying anywhere. So thank you for that. Also, my neighbors and many friends have been really diligent about passing out cloth bags in stores. You know, whenever they go to the store, they'll think, oh, let me take some extras, I've done that and given it to people. And I'm seeing more and more, there's a couple stores that need a little help where people could be encouraged to use cloth bags. But overall, I think it's been a real success. I think the town just looks cleaner. I mean, you almost forget about it, because you'd always saw, you could even see plastic bags in the gutter or on the curves or on the sidewalks. And I'm sure they're around, but I haven't seen any recently, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Deanna Mooney, also in regards to plastic bags.
Hi, I live on Hester Street in Silver City. This is kind of one of those dear-to-my-heart kinds of things, and I know there's no vote on it tonight, but I just think that there's a lot of people who feel like I do. There's statistics that will show that most people do not recycle the plastic bags. They end up in the trash, a small percent of them do get reused for trash or, you know, dog litter, a dog, cat litter, things like that. Some people complain about, oh, well, it's raising the cost of my groceries, because, you know. Well, the answer to that is to bring your own bag. And as we can often see and hear, there are many free ones given out. Single socks will sell you them for a quarter, which sounds pretty reasonable. So again, I would reiterate what Alan said, and that is to thank you for the original passing of this ordinance, and I would hope that it stands if anything comes up about it, to try to repeal it. I think we're on the right track with that.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is council comments, Council Conno.
Thank you Mayor. So, I know we're going to talk about plastic bags in a little bit, but I just wanted to mention that this was in no way meant when I brought it up to repeal the ordinance. I just was hoping that Mr. Timmy would come in, he has, and he will do his report, and just so that the public can be more aware of what is going on. And I know you walked in late, sir, and I bet you want to talk about this, so we're going to talk about it later on in the agenda, and I'm sure the mayor will probably let you speak then. And the other thing I wanted to announce was, many of you know I've been having severe issues with my feet for several years now. I'm going to be having surgery on Friday. It is a very intense surgery, and it will mean that I will be in a wheelchair for anywhere between six and 12 weeks to recover. So for the foreseeable future, probably at least the next three weeks or so, I will only be available through phone or email. I will have both of those with me at all times still, I just will not be available for any public events other than council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Ray?
Thank you Mayor. I want to give thanks to the Silver City downtown merchants, as they have really put up the business in the city and downtown Silver. A lot of people have been coming in during the weekends. There's been a lot of activities downtown. Let's keep it up, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Raymond Smith?
Thank you Mayor. I want to start by saying what a fabulous month October has been in terms of the downtown, just like Council Ray says. All kinds of wonderful events. Last weekend, there was a homecoming, and there were Red Art and Down by Q's, there was like this poker run, and it was just a fabulous downtown experience. And I too want to acknowledge all of the downtown for doing that. I also want to say that I've received a number of email comments from citizens who knew that the council was going to be hearing a report tonight, and the vast majority of those emails reaffirmed that most citizens see the plastic bag ban as a good step for our town meeting. I want to publicly respond to a couple of citizens who asked me about the biodegradability of the thick bags and the thin bags. And the truth is that if a bag is made out of polyethylene, it's not going to actually biodegrade. What it will do is, in our New Mexico sign, it will photodegrade, which means that it actually will just break into smaller particles. One of the citizens in my district, a man who I like and respect very much, sent me a link to an article about soil bacteria and fungi working on thin-filled plastic bags. He was pretty excited. From the note, it seemed like he thought that it was, that research was showing that the thin-filled bags were biodegradable, but if you read the article, no. The article was really about potentially bags being made from aliphatic polyesters. And so it was kind of like, in the future, bags could be made with stuff that would biodegrade. So, right now, the research holds and the truth maintains that those thin-filled bags that do escape and do end up on a cactus will fall apart, but they're not actually biodegrading. Just a little bit of a history is that in 1993, Mobile Oil was fined by the Federal Trade Commission because it was, they had labels on their plastic bags saying they were degradable, which the Federal Trade Commission said was really a lie, so they had to stop doing that. So, I want to say that in July 2014, in a note to a citizen, I said, and it's our experience, if our experience in Silver City is similar to the over 200 municipalities in the US that have enacted similar ordinances, so remember, we're not a first mover, we're a late mover on this. We'll face some bumps along the way during the first six months or so after the implementation of the ban of single-use thin-filled bags. But by the time the ordinance will have been in effect a year, at the end of January 2016, the transition pain will hopefully recede, and we'll be having much less litter and be spending less town money cleaning up litter. And as well, by enacting this ordinance, our permitting process of the landfill should be much more affordable and move more smoothly. So I'm hoping that we hear about some of those data tonight.
Thank you, Council. Council Bedison?
Thank you Mayor. Well, I want to talk about, last week was pretty exciting in Silver City, there was so much to do that you didn't really know what to do next. Just a few things, I was fortunate to attend the Chicano Conference, and I want to congratulate Patricia Conno and Lepickano for an incredible event that they did. If you missed it, hopefully sometime somewhere in the future, they'll have another one, because it was really well done. And I was fortunate to attend the Little Toad expansion celebration. I'm really thrilled about that, I'm thrilled that they received the money from LITA to do that. It's really a win-win for the town and for Little Toad. And hopefully, when they come out with the best beers, brewed beers, craft beers, Little Toad will be on that list next year. Because right now, I think they were four Albuquerque breweries on that, and I want us to be on there, I want Little Toad on there. Just, you know, just a little competition there, it's good for the soul. I also want to talk real briefly about, I was re-elected to the Municipal League Board of Directors as a director-at-large, and we talked about issues going forward into legislative session, and there's a few things I wanted to mention to everyone. Critical issues are for us to retain our municipal revenues as they are. There has been a suggestion by New Mexico Tax and Rev Department that they would like to take all of the GRT, all that grocery receipts tax that we've all implemented differently in our municipalities for different reasons, combine it, and then redistribute it in a per capita basis. So, it's really the state share of the 1.225 rather than all of them, although I think they're looking to doing all of them in the future. So what that means is Silver City would lose. It's otherwise described by the Municipal League as the $80 million redistribution of funds. And the way we consider it, the way we see it, is that while some municipalities will win and some will lose, the point of it is, none of us should lose. Our citizens wanted this, they wanted the, they want the money, we want the money to stay here, that's the money that we use to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and if you're being taxed, the money should be, should stay in this municipality. It should not be redistributed to somebody else for use. It's really something that really doesn't bode well for any sort of economic development if we all get a piece of the pie based on a per capita. It just doesn't really make sense, because those towns that are incredibly tiny, I think it's 69 people that live in Tow Ski Valley, and they would lose the majority of their grocery receipts tax, because they get most of their grocery receipts tax not from the 69 people, but they get it from all the tourists and the outside folks that live in the area that come up to the ski basin. So it really hits things like that. Hobbs is the big loser of over $18 million. So this is something that we will make sure that, over the course of the legislative cycle, if this comes up, you know, we'll be working, I'll certainly be talking to you, talking to the council, and to our mayor, and then working through the league to ensure as a body, because we all belong to the league, you know, the council does, that this does not occur, that we retain what we tax in our town. And the other thing is, there's several competing notions about new tax plans. And we don't think anything's going to go forward in the 30-day session, because it's only 30 days. But if it does take place, the most important thing that we need to make sure that we as the Municipal League, what we need to make sure that we do is that it doesn't harm municipalities, that it doesn't take away from what we currently have, similar to what happened with the whole harmless. We don't need any reduction, we don't, we want to retain what we have, and make sure that we're not all of a sudden, you all are being taxed in such a way that we can't even give you the basic fundamental needs that you need, that we all need in our town. So, there's a couple of things on the horizon, and I think that some of them, we're pushing hard, we are reforming the Tax Task Force, which I was on in the past and hope to be appointed to again in the future, so you'll be kept up to date on that. The last thing I want to talk about is the plastic bag ordinance. I think many of you know that I'm the one that sponsored it, and I think that based on what I think Dr. Timmy is going to show us today in reports, that it's completely ensuring that the reasons for its introduction are actually, is what's occurring, meaning a slightly litter has gone away. I know that we're going to hear about the landfill and the requirements that we had from the Environmental Department prior to doing the plastic bag reduction ordinance, and it's enabled it so that we don't have to increase the cost of tipping fees for folks in the town of Silver City, or do all of the things that the Environmental Department wanted us to do that would have really increased the cost of landfill functioning, and of course, your waste disposal at the landfill. And it also, originally was introduced because of the goals that the town had set forth and the Mayor's Climate da-da-da-da-da, I can't remember what the whole name is, Committee. So I just called the Former Mayor's Climate Committee, where they suggested that this sort of, the single, the reduction of single-use plastic bags go into effect as an environmental measure that's for the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. So I'm confident that it's working. I know that change is hard. I know that people still don't like to put seatbelts on, even though that's been around for a really long time. This is just another thing, it's just, it's just a matter of taking the time to put bags in your car. If you forget them, walk back to your car, get a little exercise in, pick them up, and take them back in. I want to thank those folks at Walmart, the checkers that I've met at Walmart, I think actually one might be in the audience, who thanked me for bringing in my own bags. I would like to thank also Albertsons and other stores that have really great publicity and say, you know, do a good thing for the environment today. You know, reuse and recycle. And so I think that we are moving forward, it will take time, just like everything else. The only other thing I want to talk about in terms of plastic bags is, I recently relocated an email that I received last year during the waiting period for the ordinance to come into effect. And it was from a company that has created 100% degradable compostable merchandise bags that look and feel and perform like plastic, but are actually made out of limestone. So the question would be is whether or not that's going to be something that's an option for us. Does it need water to degrade? We're not really, you know, we're in the southwest, yes, we've got a lot of rain now, but that doesn't mean we always have a lot of rain. But according to the statement on their website, it takes about 180 days to decompose, and it will decompose even if buried all the way down, deep down in landfill. So it is an option to look at, it is made out of limestone, it's not made out of anything other than a very natural substance. All the other plastic bags, as Council Raymond Smith has said, I mean, it's really a petroleum byproduct. I know that folks don't think that, but that's what plastic's made out of, it's petroleum byproduct. So I think that what we've done is a good step, and I hope that people, based on what we hear today and some more information that Dr. Timmy and I know that Alex Brown will hopefully tell us about, that it reinforces the fact that we've done something good for our town, for our citizens, and certainly will move us forward into the future, I hope. So, thank you. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, Council. I wasn't going to have any comments, but there was some thoughts that were triggered. I, you know, the New Mexico Tax and Rev does like to play around with our revenues a lot, and I actually deal with them on a different level in my profession, and have come to not appreciate that department as much as I probably should. And I usually don't share any love with them. But it does make me think that I don't want to, I want to ensure that that's not how I feel about all state agencies. And in fact, I was, unfortunately, I was out of town on Friday, so I did not get to go to the Little Toad event with, that head secretary, Borella, from the New Mexico Economic Department, and I really wanted to, I would have loved to be there to thank the secretary and the department for doing all that they have for our community with these LITA funds. This is the third grant that they've given us, and this is really at the discretion in many ways of the secretary. In fact, these grants are, the initial process is getting a commitment from the secretary, even before you apply. So you get the commitment from the secretary that he's going to fund it, and then you start applying for it. It's one of the most odd processes, but still one that I appreciate greatly. That department's been a big supporter and fan of Silver City, and they have done wonderful things for us, and I do want to express that appreciation and let everybody know that though, kind of as Council Bedison was mentioning, and I've mentioned in the past, not, a lot of the departments at the state level do not get our love, i.e. the Tax and Rev. Does anybody need round two? Moving on, approval of the minutes. Council Raymond Smith?
Thank you Mayor. I approve the regular minutes of the Council of the Town of Silver City's meeting on September 22nd, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion to stay in.
We have a motion second for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council on September 22nd, 2015. Is there any discussion? We have a motion second, it's read into the record, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is under reports. Mr. Brown, Mr. Timmy?
Wanted to update you on the status of the plastic bag ordinance, as all of you have mentioned earlier, that it was enacted on July 8th of last year. And I want to thank Council Bedison for sponsoring that ordinance. And I think it's been one of the best things I've seen happen in Silver City in the 11 years that I've lived here. And with the ordinance, it went into effect on January 8th of this year, and so we're now at about 10 months, and I wanted to update you on, you know, what I've seen and what I've been able to observe regarding the ordinance. Actually, even before the ordinance went into effect, I did spend time going to all of the retail merchants around town, talking to them, alerting them to what their requirements would be, and even took with me calipers, in case anybody questioned, you know, the ordinance says that they can have bags up to 2.25 millimeters. So I had calipers with me in case they were curious about the type of bag that they had. And talked to them to also encourage them to get the word out to their customers that the ordinance was coming into effect, and it would be good for them to be prepared for it. Some stores did more preparation than others, but it was, I think, a reflection of the higher-level management decisions that some of the stores had to go through, whether or not they could use signs that I provided them to alert customers to the ordinance coming up. During that process of going to all the merchants, I, you know, went in and said, introduced myself, by the way, I didn't introduce myself tonight, I'm sorry, I'm Terry Timmy of the Office of Sustainability. I went in and introduced myself and without, you know, just told them about the ordinance, and then listened for their comments, and out of those 212 merchants that I visited, only seven people said, well, I think this is, you know, blah, 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 stupid idea, or, you know, something to that effect. And all the others were either non-committal, or, there were a number of them that were very favorable to the ordinance going into effect. I also want to thank Council and Mr. Brown for providing funds during that period of time to help our citizens get prepared for the ordinance going to an effect. The town, in addition to P&amp;M, purchased a bunch of, 7,400 of these reusable bags. And with help from the Volunteer Center, Girl Scouts, and another, other organizations, we distributed these door-to-door to probably about half of the households in Silver City at various events, and even during the Thanksgiving rush at Walmart, we gave out about, almost 2,000 bags at that time. And a number of the stores during that time period also purchased bags, and we're handing them out, or organizations, for example, Freeport handed out bags to a lot of their employees. And just today, I received bags that the Food Co-op, Silver City Food Co-op, has purchased and donated 100 of these to our office, and so I've distributed some of those here at this meeting, and I'll have the rest of them in our office, which is 1106 North Pope Street, the Office of Sustainability, somewhat known as the former Shamrock Gas Station. So anyone from the public's welcome to come in and get one of these at any time. So, once the ordinance went into effect, there were a couple of options that stores had to adapt to the ordinance. One was to either not give out bags at all, which some stores did, for example, Shoe Department, you know, shoes come in a box, you don't need to put them in a bag too. And then a lot of stores switched to paper bags, like Albertson's. Some of the stores were already in compliance, places like Beals already had heavyweight plastic bags, so it didn't affect them at all. Some of the Dollar Type Stores, Walmart, and Food Basket went to a heavier weight plastic bag that is approved under the ordinance. And one of the things that both of these bags, this is from Walmart, this is from approved basket, they say they are recyclable and reusable, and, you know, unfortunately, I don't think the stores have encouraged that as much as could have happened, and I think, you know, there are still a lot of people go in and don't, don't take one of these bags that they previously received back with them. And I'd welcome any comments from anyone as to how we can go about increasing that, particularly, I think as we come into the holiday season, there are a lot of people going to be doing holiday shopping, both, you know, at the big-box stores as well as downtown. And if we can get people to reuse bags even more, I think it'll be better for all of the merchants. So, I'm open to comments from the public at any time. My number's 575-519-8987. Reach up by the Office of Sustainability and talk to us at any time with comments. So, getting to the reason for the ordinance was actually, the primary justification for the ordinance was litter reduction. And that, I think, has been, you know, a glowing success. I've had a number of people, you know, come up to me and say, you know, I just realized, I'm not seeing bags everywhere anymore. You know, it's, you know, not always something that you're aware of, because it's been a little bit of a gradual trend, but, you know, I think it has been a very big success story. Applaud Council's courage in enacting the ordinance and taking the approach that they did.
Can I step in here for a second?
Sure.
A very part of the reason that I backed Terry in this effort was, as my position as the Chair of the Southwest Waste Authority, we're under the permitting process currently. Our hearing is November 5th in the Our hearing is November 5th in this room, and so I've been preparing for that re-permit. The litter control has been something that had been a big issue with the landfill. And the Solid Waste Bureau was suggesting some fairly expensive recommendations for us to increase the litter control process out there. And primarily, a lot of it was because of the plastic bags that were always getting stuck in the brush out there. But as of this last year, when the ordinance went into effect, after that, you know, Terry's got a couple pictures before and after in there. Before, we've got to be, we've got to be a little bit more exactly what happened was before, this was before Gary Staley and his crews went in and cleaned up. So that was worst-case scenario. But the, but the reality is, is that the landfill was always having to go back every few months and clean that same mess up. We haven't had to, because those bags aren't out there as much. There's some here and there, but these heavier bags that go into the landfill, they don't fly around as much, so we haven't had those problems. The Solid Waste Bureau has identified that. In fact, I was in Albuquerque today, working on our testimony for the re-permitting hearing, and the engineers didn't even know that we had passed the ordinance. And one of their concerns was a concern that the Solid Waste Bureau had presented early on, and it was this trash issue. Well, they themselves had said, but they, we haven't heard too much about it recently. Well, it's, and I explained, we passed this plastic bag ordinance, we went out there and cleaned up, and since then, it's been very easy to, a lot easier, not very easy, a lot easier to, to keep the trash under, the trash outside the boundaries of the landfill under control. And so it's been a very positive process to date. I mean, what we've seen at the landfill, I mean, it's made a huge impact on the neighbors in the area directly, and I, and I think we see it all around town, you know, with the streets and the parks departments. They're not picking up this trash and that type of thing like we used to. So I just wanted to add that where we were at this point about the landfill.
I do think that's an important point to make with the pictures that I provided you is that, you know, they were randomly selected, you know, I wasn't, you know, shooting, you know, you know, just trying to get the worst-case scenario, and I have no idea in terms of whether, when it was in terms of cleanup out there. But I do know that I took 58 kids from Aldo Leopold on a tour of the landfill and recycling center two weeks ago, and we were standing, you know, right where the trash compact, where people dump trash and the compactor powders that enter the ground, and there were very few bags blowing off of there. So I think, you know, that Mr. Brown is correct, the heavyweight bags don't create the problem that we were having with the lightweight, single-use bags. They're completely different aerodynamically. The other aspect of things that I did in relation, based on my background in science, I wanted to do a little survey of my own to see what the effect of the plastic bags was in my neighborhood. And I chose an area from 32nd Street to Pine Street between Silver and Swan, and it's a one-mile loop around Stout Elementary School and the Fox Field and the tennis courts and in that area. And I picked 19 days out of about a month to a month and a half period, both right before the ordinance in November, and after the ordinance went into effect in February, January and February, and then just the past month before this meeting, and found a statistically significant difference in the number of bags that I picked up as I was walking that one-mile loop on 19 different days. On, before the ordinance went into effect, I picked up 11 bags. After it went into effect, only four and none this last month. I didn't find any bags when I was walking around. So I think, you know, the, it's, the ordinance has done what it was supposed to do in terms of reducing litter. It hasn't changed people's way of behavior. That takes time. I think people are adapting to it, and more people I see in the stores are taking their bags in with them. Final point I wanted to make was that we haven't had any big enforcement issues as a result of it either. Code enforcement had to issue one letter to a store because they weren't able to order enough of the heavyweight bags, and they used some single-use, some of the single-use plastic bags, and so we just told them not to do that in the future, and they haven't. So it hasn't been a big enforcement issue. Some of the thrift stores were worried about how they were going to reuse their bags. That seems to be resolved since there aren't any of the single-use bags going around that much anymore. So I think the future, you know, of this single-use plastic bag ordinance, you know, is bright. You know, I think we've done a great thing here, and I commend you for your courage in introducing the ordinance. We've gotten, I've gotten a number of phone calls from other communities around the state asking for advice on how to do this. So I think we're setting an example. You know, we were the second city in New Mexico to do it, and as Counselor Ammon Smith, I think it was, said there are over 200 around the country and countries around the world that have done it. So, you know, I think we're joining a good group of communities. Now entertain any questions you might have.
Just a quick question. We, when, when we were looking at this re-permitting process and everything, we were, we were looking at a huge body of cost that was going to be passed on to the end consumer, and this was weighed against some of the anticipated costs that the, the stores would be passing on to their consumer. Do we have, I know we heard some of those numbers in the past, but do you recall those numbers that we were looking at paying to come into compliance?
Yes, the cost to come into compliance with what they were recommending, to put up the litter control barriers. Right now, we charge $43 a ton out at the landfill. We were looking at having to increase to about $46 to $48 a ton. So it's a significant increase, and especially in a community like this where our rates right now are probably the, in the top-third in the state, the most expensive already, without having to add that cost to it. And so we're talking, if we're talking $6 a ton, we're talking around $180,000 a year for additional litter control. And that's not absorbed by the landfill, the authority. That's passed on to each of the communities, and then there, it's passed on to the consumer, to our residents locally. And, you know, we're a big, we're a community that bring a lot of people in that don't live here, but we were going to be the people that had to bear that cost directly, as residents of Grant County. So, you know, that, it was, it was a disproportionate cost that was going to be borne by our residents, and since now, we're, we're just changing habit. We're not passing on a cost, we're just changing habit.
Because that was a, that was a big question, I think, going in. There was a huge question on the cost of the merchants to implement the new systems, new processes, and they were considerably lower than that, and even passing those on to consumer, it's substantially less than what the alternative was. The alternative was, was huge dollar cost to our residents versus, though our residents do shop and have to bear some of the increased costs that the merchants might pass on, that's also shared with people outside our community, where landfill costs would not be shared. It would all, the entire burden would be on us in a greater number. So we're saving money for every individual in town.
And Grant County.
And Grant County.
The entire county, so I mean...
And that's something that's not known.
Yes, and it's because most of the bags come from our stores in Grant County, because I mean Silver City, because this is the shopping hub. And, and again, going back to your grocery receipts issue, you know, it almost is the exact same concept. It's, if you, if you share it by per capita, the landfill cost is shared per capita, whereas if we do pass it on to the end consumer, it's borne by everyone using the services. And, and so, yes, exactly what you're saying, that's, it ultimately ended up a lot cheaper for the residents of Grant County.
One of the, just some of my observations. I anticipated that this would be a successful ordinance, but interestingly enough, I expected more hurdles, more kickback, and a lot more issues in this success. And it's actually exceeded my expectations. It's gone far more smooth, far less complaints, and far less costly than I actually anticipated a successful implementation would be. In fact, just on a worst-case scenario, from a real pessimistic view, I remember hearing comments that we are going to crush our economy, everybody's going to flee Silver City to go shop elsewhere. And interestingly enough, we've exceeded their expectations, because they themselves, those pessimists who said that we were going to crush our economy and they were going to go, they're not going to spend a extra 100 bucks to drive anywhere just to spite an ordinance. They are still patronizing our merchants. So we've actually exceeded the most pessimistic of our citizenry. I would say that it's been very well, very well done, and I would, does anybody have any questions or further comments? I do know that we had some citizens come in after public input. This is slightly out of order, but I'm going to take some liberty to, if the Counsel agrees, take some liberty. And I will remind the audience, public input, you're supposed to be here five minutes before, and this is for future reference, five minutes before, and sign in for public input. But taking some liberties, I will invite anybody from the public to ask a question or make comments. And please introduce yourself.
All right. I'm Matthew Hancock, live over here on 2255 Bosworth, and I am, I'm sorry I didn't come in here, I wasn't aware of that particular procedure of coming in five minutes early and going through that. If I had known, I would have followed that. I am a Walmart cashier, and in remarks to the, to the mayor's compliment me on saying thank you for bringing in your bags, I don't say thank you because I'm interested in trying to, trying to save the ecology or, you know, whatever. I'm more interested in it from a economic standpoint, because my concern is that the cost of the bags is not just being borne by the consumers, but also by people like me who are working for a company like Walmart. Because Walmart has a We Share program for their employees. Basically, that, that program, if Walmart can, in our local market here in Silver City, can show a profit, then they will share some of that profit with their employees in the way of a bonus. And that, basically, that bonus, one of the things that we are encouraged to do is to try to find ways to save money for the company. And one of those ways is if we can use less bags. Now, a lot of people do not, I, it's just been my general observation, that a lot of people just don't bring their bags in, they don't recycle. There's, I think there, sure, there's some people I get that come in and I thank them, because I, I hope, it is just simply my hope, that that will come back in a monetary gift to me as a result of thanking them. But I have no guarantees about that, whatever. But the thing is, is that what that encourages me to do is to use the full capacity of that bag. Well, for some of our citizens, especially elderly folks who are frail and who can't lift that much, I mean, each of those bags can carry about 22 pounds. That's what the, our literature says on those heavy plastic bags. And so I try to find ways to use all 22 pounds if I can. In some cases, with sensitive items like chemicals or things that are fragile, I have to forego that. I have to go ahead and give them a lot less than 22 pounds. And I just feel like this ordinance doesn't take that into consideration. I feel like that I would like to see it repealed, because I fear that it will impact my paycheck. And so I guess if we're going to continue to have this, if you really want to implement it, what I would ask is if we can have some sort of tax or fee that is spread across the entire, all of the merchants that they're made to charge this fee. Because if they are made to charge this fee, Walmart won't charge a fee for bags, and I theorize, and I'm only guessing, but it's probably because they don't want to have to have, compete against our neighbor down the road, their Albertson's or Food Basket, and they don't have, they, they might not charge the same for their bags, or, and so they don't want to have to compete on that basis, so they just don't charge. And early on, it was my understanding that there was going to be a fee for each one of these bags. And I, about, I don't know, two, three months in on this ordinance being in place, there was actually a statement put out from our company that said that we are not going to charge a fee ever. Now, and, you know, I can't understand that, because, like I said, that would be anti-competitive for them to do that. However, if there was a fee that was leveled by this government, however you want to put it, then that would definitely encourage people to recycle. I've had, I've had a number of people say, "I will recycle those bags when they start charging me for each bag that I bring in," or that I take, or some sort of fee structure in place. But until then, they're going to continue to take those bags, and bags are going to get thrown out, they're going to end up out in the landfill. Okay, sure, they didn't blow around, but they're still out there. And they're not biodegradable, as you've all elicited to already. So that's out. So I'm not sure that it's really getting to your intended goal. And I, and I think it's costing the consumer money, but it's costing me money in two different ways. I'm a consumer, and I'm an employee. So I have to ask, you know, what, what can we do to encourage... So I have to ask, you know, what can we do to encourage, if you're gonna have recycling, how are you gonna really push it along so that they're really recycling and not just taking a bag and throwing out another bag? And then costing all of us more money at the store for the cost of the bags that are being, you know, the cost is being passed along. But it's also being taken probably out of my paycheck in some form or fashion. I might not be aware of it. And that's all I've got to say about it.
Thank you. Would anybody else from the audience like to comment on this?
Well, I apologize, because I do know the rules. But I think I'm part of staff, just about. Is that all right, Ken? Alex, is that all right?
Okay. I just want, I just want to attest and confirm what's been reported by Alex as far as, our youth have been at the landfill various times all summer. Last summer, prior to the ordinance, this summer, post-ordinance. And it truly has been amazing. Just a week and a half ago, we were painting graffiti underneath some of your overpass bridges. And the only bags there were the old white ones that were still hanging in some of the trees with the floods. And we picked up trash as well as painted graffiti. And I would dare say, I don't remember us picking up one green bag that day. So I understand some of the problems like Mr. Hancock has mentioned. I think the next step would be more education, encouraging people to bring their bags back. And I agree, you can put a lot more in these green ones than you kept the old ones, so, thank you.
And just a comment. The savings, approximately 180,000 annually savings. This isn't theorized. We didn't have to pay it. We would have had to pay it. We saved that money. That was real savings that has materialized already for all of our citizens. All of our citizens have more money in their pockets because we did not have to pay that, those actual costs that would have materialized had we not taken that action. Real dollars that happened, in fact. Very important point. But it is, you know, actually, and I very much appreciate the comments because it is actually good to hear from the people who are physically in there, physically doing it. And like I said, this has gone much more smooth than I anticipated. Because I anticipated actually a lot more issues. And these are some of those issues that I did anticipate. And we do need to know, and we need to, because we can always tweak and modify. A comment is, this ordinance is in effect. It's in effect until it's undone. It's not on the agenda to be undone right now. This is just a report on how everything's going. And as everything, as I've mentioned before, it's exceeded everybody's expectations. So I, it's hard to imagine a repeal, at least in the near future. But we do need to know what those issues are as they arise. We appreciate knowing that. Because if we ever need to modify, whether it's administratively or otherwise, educationally, we want to do so. In fact, we may want to do some more bag blitzes, if you will, see if we can acquire some, hand some out some more, and do some strategic events to try to get those out. Probably focused a little bit more on the Walmart area. I go to all the stores, all the box stores, all the local businesses. I like to patronize everybody. I do know that there's much higher compliance at Albertson's when I go there. I take my bags to Walmart, but, and unfortunately, there is a much lower compliance. And I don't know why. That could be due to a number of reasons. Maybe people like those plastic bags so much that they actually wanna go in there just to buy one item and get one of those bags so they can use them elsewhere. But who knows why? But we do need to do probably a little bit of an educational blitz and probably a little focused. Mr. Smith?
I wanna address a couple of issues of Mr. Hancock. First, let me give him, that's my business card. I think he raises some very justified issues that we should be considering. And I'd be, I want him to be, to know that I'm available to come to work with anybody at Walmart to help increase awareness so that, you know, they do have a higher profitability. You know, I think it's important that they thrive as a store also. And, you know, I'd be willing to work with him. Also, I just wanna clarify that the ordinance as it is written does allow any store to charge a fee for a plastic bag. It's entirely up to the store whether they want to do that or not. So Walmart, you know, if corporate says they want to, they can do that. I understand, you know, it may not be in their, you know, best interest for competitive reasons, but they are entitled to that. Also, an update for council. Santa Fe passed an ordinance banning plastic bags. And at one time, they were not gonna charge a fee. They didn't think they were getting the proper compliance. And so now, they are starting to charge a fee for bags in Santa Fe. So that is a step that council could take if they so choose.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Timmy. I believe that that money goes back to the city for educational purposes. It is a charge that's placed on everyone who has to comply with the ordinance in Santa Fe. But it doesn't go to, a small, itty-bitty portion goes to the store. The remainder goes to Santa Fe for educational purposes. And to ensure, to work with compliance, not just of the stores, but also of the folks that, you know, try to encourage their citizens. And they had done theirs at least a year before we had done ours. And I think that it's also something that Councilman Smith had mentioned in the past, that sometimes that's the next step that's necessary. But I think that, right now, I wouldn't want to see anything like that happen until we get to a turning point. Because I think it has been immensely successful. And, you know, out of all the comments, all the emails, all the phone calls, I received one negative about the, and then I talked to the person and explained that some of the information they had was incorrect. So I think that ultimately, the reason we did it, it's been successful. We're not having to pass on $180,000 worth of cost. We're gonna be able to, it sounds like, be able to have the landfill, the salt waste authority, be able to get its permit renewed without too much of a problem. One hopes, huh? It'll cost our fingers. But the fact that we have done, at least to one of the major problems that was out there and dealt with it in a way that we didn't pass on the cost to the citizens. So, and I think that the mayor did a good job of pointing out that it's not everybody that comes into town that purchases something that would get that cost. It's only our citizens that would get that cost. So the cost would be higher, and be much larger. Thank you.
Councilor Kano? You have a question?
Thank you, actually, I have a statement.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Timmy, for your report. I really appreciate all the work that you put into this. I just wanted to share how this question of mine came about, having this discussion. And that's, that a lot of people have a lot of opinions, and they share them mostly on social media. And there have been a lot of conversations on social media over the past few months about the plastic bags. So I wanted the community to have the opportunity to come and say, you know, let us know how they feel. And I have to say that, since I posted something on social media, since we talked about it at the last meeting, like Dr. Benson, I have only received positive comments from my constituents. So I think it's interesting that the people that have taken the time to call and to send emails are actually the ones that are in support of this. So, you know, if you have comments, please continue to give them to us. But at this point, I mean, I think all of us are still in support of the ordinance and are gonna continue to help Dr. Timmy in any way we can to support it.
Any other questions, comments, any other reports? Moving on. Need a break? Next item under new business. Approval disapproval of a public celebration permit application for an uncommonly good evening event sponsored by the Volunteer Center on October 24, 2015, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at The Commons at 501 East 13th Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder Little Toad Creek LLC, doing business as Little Toad Creek Brewery, liquor license number 67021, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico.
Good evening. I'm Bart Brown. I'm the assistant manager at Little Toad Creek. Forgive me, this is the first time I've stepped in front of you guys, so I'm not exactly sure what I'm supposed to talk about. But I just wanted to let you all know that the Volunteer Center asked us to brew a special beer for them for their fundraiser, Uncommonly Good Evening. We made it with the coriander that they grew in their garden. And it should be a really good time. If there's any questions.
Is there any questions? Councilor Benson?
Thank you, Mayor. The only question I have is, did the building property owner sign approval? Because the one that we have there is a blank spot for the signature.
Um, I...
So you need to look on the...
I will, Alicia was just here. I will get with her tomorrow morning and get her assignment.
Do we need that tonight for approval? No, mine doesn't. Right here? No, this is the one here. It's got the circle on it. That's the, it's blank. Yeah, is that required? It's under the alcohol gaming division, public celebration permit application, wine grower, small brewer, and craft distillery license holder. That's the one I'm looking at, Mr. Scabron. Is it her signature?
I don't know.
Okay, then I thought it was circled as if it wasn't.
Yeah, that, that's what she does.
Okay, then that's cool. I actually thought it was a mistake, okay. I'm sorry, Alicia. Thank you. I didn't think it was. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? You did fine, just for future reference. That's exactly what you do, is you just come in and briefly tell us what's going on and offer yourself up for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilor.
Without any questions, I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Kano?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to approve a public celebration permit application for an uncommonly good evening event sponsored by the Volunteer Center on October 24, 2015, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at The Commons at 501 East 13th Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder Little Toad Creek LLC, doing business as Little Toad Creek Brewery, liquor license numbers 67021, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico.
Councilor Ray?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second is read into the record. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, a second is read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number 1243 and ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 2, Economic Development Plan, Section 16-67 and 16-69 of the Town of Silver City Code of Ordinances. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Julia. I first want to offer that there's actually a change of title. And I will explain why, but substantially the change, the same. So the Local Economic Development Act here in New Mexico allows public support of economic development, which is something we are all interested in here. Because economic development means that we can foster, promote, and enhance our local economy. In essence, LIDA, acronym there, is used to enter into a public-private partnership for our local economic benefit. So I wanna let you know that right now there's a $50 million pot in New Mexico's LIDA fund. Now, not all of that is going to go to local, like we would do here. Some of it is gonna go to bigger projects in bigger urban areas. But I think we ought to get a piece of it. And communities that have passed their Local Economic Development Act with the most current statutory requirements are able to act as fiscal agents, both for ourselves and on behalf of projects that may have initiated in the state. Now, we want to always protect against any IOR voiced funds. And we wanna use our public money prudently and wisely. And we don't want people or corporations or businesses taking our money and not delivering upon the agreed-upon economic development goals. So in New Mexico, though, our legislature amended the big statute and then the section related to clawback provisions and a section related to the project participation agreement, duties and requirements. They did some changes in the statute. And really, what I am proposing in this notice of intent is that we bring our local ordinance completely in line with what the statute at the state level is. That means that we will really be eligible for funds and that we will be seen clearly as working to be aligned with the state requirements. So this notice of intent is about amending our current economic development ordinance, and in two ways. There are two proposed amendments, one kinda long and the other short. The longer-proposed amendment inserts language about protecting the Town of Silver City against misuse or loss. This is commonly referred to as a clawback capability. And let me explain it this way. Let's say a business receives incentives from our town. I would think that we would all agree that incentives, which usually means some infusion of cash or something else, should be paid back in terms of positive economic impact. But if there is no positive economic impact, let's say that the town offers some incentives, but the business decides to move after taking the incentives. Don't you think that business ought to pay us back? I think so. So that is what one portion of this amendment is about. Is that in a project participation agreement, which is what a business or an entity, a company, entity enters into the town, that there will be benchmarks or conditions that that entity agrees to meet. And then if those benchmarks or goals are not met, then there's a payback, a value payback. Now, value is often defined in these economic development agreements as job creation, we'll make 11 jobs, or payroll value, or gross receipts, tax, revenue increases, or capital and infrastructure improvements. So there are a lot of ways to define value. But I really do think that we ought to have in writing an agreement that goals be met. And if not, clawbacks should apply. So in the provisions, the company or the entity might be required to repay all or part of the value of the incentives that were received proportionally. So perhaps it meets part of the goals, but not all. Well, then proportionally, that would be, the value would be returned. So one of the amendments, which is the, let me find it here, the dash 67 and the dash 69 sections is about adding the strong language about what a business must bring to the table and deliver on when the town uses economic incentives. So it requires a substantial contribution from kind of an entity on a project of value. And the further, the amendment provides for the company to put down some sort of security, perhaps a bond or lien or mortgage to assure performance. The other amendment is quite short. And that must be dash 37, which is in the new NOI that we all up here have a copy of. And which will, if passed, be the one that the public will be able to see and comment upon. And that short amendment really is just a language cleanup. It simply clarifies that the town's incentives committee will review project participation agreements agreements that involve monetary assistance from the town. So it just cleans up a sentence there. So taken together, these two amendments position us to foster economic development in our town while decreasing the risk that the town bears for those efforts.
Thank you. Is there any questions or does staff want to comment on this?
I can guess, I'll just explain part of the reason that we're doing this, of course, is the Little Toad is one of the most recent projects that we've worked on. And the last amendment that Councilman Smith is referring to about the incentive review committee reviewing project participation agreements where the town is providing its own funding is important because, for instance, and we've got the perfect example, the Little Toad, the state is providing the financial assistance, but we are acting as fiscal agent. So the state has already done their due diligence and has reviewed everything as our incentive review committee would do for our funds. So that's already been done. That's why we don't want to do it again because what happens is incentive review committee would review something coming from the town, refer it to the town council, the town council would make the decision. In this case, the state has already done their due diligence, and then it's coming to you, and you'll make the decision again. So it all lies, the final decision all lies with you. We just don't want to duplicate and make the processes harder for a business. Economic development is about making things harder. It's about, let's do what we can do to foster business growth. So there may be a case where they're getting assistance from both the city and the state. And at that point, yes, our incentive review committee would review the application, but the benefit in that case was we would have the fiscal impact analysis that the state has already done. We wouldn't have to do our own on top of whatever they've done. So that's the positive thing. And, you know, I think I'm going to want to look at how they're doing their fiscal impact analysis just in case we need to do something on our own at some future date. So, you know, I just wanted to explain a little bit in depth, more in depth. For instance, in this case, what's going to happen if this passes is the project participation agreement has to be adopted by ordinance. So what would happen is, in the first meeting in November, we will see the actual ordinance, this ordinance. If it is adopted, then we will have a project participation agreement with Little Toad that we will present to the town council, that the fiscal impact analysis is in the process of being done, that you will have in hand at that point. So we'll do the NOI at the beginning of November, and then the adoption of that project participation agreement at the first meeting in December, if all these things pass. But I'm just giving you an example of what would happen if this passes. And then the project participation agreement would go into effect January 1, I believe, with Little Toad. And then after that, the Town of Silver City is actually the fiscal agent, we're the ones responsible to monitor that they're complying with the project participation agreement. If there's a clawback, then we will be the ones doing the clawback. But if there's any fees that are required to be paid to do the clawback of state funds, the state will pay those fees for us. We just have to get the work done. So there's nothing, there's still nothing out of our pocket, we're just fiscal agent.
Just as a small comment, and I've done one of these in the past, in fact, I thought we were all up to speed with the one that we did for the Silco. But LEDA, L-E-D-A, stands for Local Economic Development Act, which was put in place by the state to answer some of the issues that are in place due to anti-donation, because we're not supposed to just give money to private citizens or business owners in order to profit and prosper. So what LEDA was put into place by the state was to allow for some of that if it was in the best interest of the state or the local community to make an investment that improved the economy and all the citizens therein. So it's a very important act. And when it was put in, our town put in our, and as such, we had to have our own ordinances to follow suit. And we had one put in place when LEDA first came out. But over time, like all state acts, there's tweaks, modifications. And what this is really trying to address in materially speaking is coming into compliance with all the little changes that the states made so that we can fully reap all the benefits of the LEDA Act. And I thank Councilman Smith for bringing this forward because, like so many cases, I like to keep as many tools in our toolbox to help us out economically, and this is definitely one of them. Councilor Benson, other question?
I have a comment. As a former Town and Senate Review Committee member back in the 90s, I appreciate having the adjustments made to follow and comply with state statute. I think that these are hopefully provisions that we'll never have to clawback anything, but I think it's something that ensuring that not only our funding, but the state funding is being used appropriately is part of the due diligence that we owe our citizens. And so, thank you for sponsoring this ordinance.
Is there any other questions or comments? I would also like to say I fully support updating this LEDA Act, our plan. Any other comments? Does anybody from the audience want to comment in this regard? At this point, I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Smith?
I move to approve this notice of intent to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 2, Economic Development Plan, Sections 16-47, 16-67, and 16-69 of the Town of Silver City Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Benson?
I second her statement.
We have a motion, a second is read into the record. Any further discussion? Quickly, we don't, you read into the record previously the language that follows with the Section 16-47. We don't need to, that does not need to be reiterated in the motion since it's in the record already?
No, because it's already inserted into the document. When you put it out for public comment and publish it, it will have the new language in it.
Perfect. Perfect. Is there any other questions or discussion? We have a motion, a second is read into the record. Roll call.
Councilor Benson?
Aye.
Councilor Aman Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connell?
Aye.
Last item on the agenda, I'll have to find it so I don't mispronounce or mess up anybody's name. Next item on the agenda is appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission. We have Carmen L. Stevens' term expiring here at the end of October, and Carmen L. Stevens has reapplied to fill that spot for another term. And I would like to appoint Carmen L. Stevens. If there's, is there any objection?
Yes, sir.
Carmen is appointed. Councilor Benson?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
We have a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.